Literally crawl over the long line of jungle and...
After you've meeting the order?
No. They're cute. No. No, yay.
You're dead cool, Munga.
Again, fellas.
You're dead cool, Munga.
So, um, you guys weren't around at the last meeting and I kind of gave an update. I discussed the idea of pitching that checking account with Paul. Do you need me to go through that again? Because I also visited with Garrett about maybe contacting Paul. Were you able to?
I did.
Did you?
We did. All by both.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
So what do you guys know that I don't?
Well, what's that, what's first one? When we talked to Paul, the state auditor, uh, he gave us this spiel about checking account versus a voucher account. And the miscommunication is we, we as a planning board never really wanted a checking account. We wanted more like a voucher account. And when Paul explained to us how a checking account set up like a 501(c)(3) and all that, that's way more than we even want. We, that's totally out of our realm. All we wanted was a voucher account.
You want a line item?
Yeah.
You want that line item?
And he said, with him, that was so much better. He understood that. He said, there's other entities around the state in municipalities that do something similar. That he has virtually no problem with that at all. How it works out is you have a, a account, we'll call it a, for lack of a better term, they talked about a sinking fund. He really didn't like that term. We toyed with different things and, uh... I've lost the word now.
But yeah, you're talking about airport contingency.
Airport contingency.
He didn't care what the name was. He named whatever he wanted.
Yeah.
But it would have a better name.
It has separate any, any funds and especially if we have a revenue generating system like with the hangar leases now. That money would go into that fund. And then, uh, we still have our budgeted funds that we, every year for our normal funding budget, we submit to you. But the contingency fund would cover any miscellaneous expenses we don't and we accrue, no, we didn't accrue, whatever it might be. And it just, if we don't use it, it accumulates. Something comes up, we need it, it's there. He, and how we do it, we said, who worked for him is when we do an expense, say a $650 door expense, at locks or something like that. We send a voucher, but we endorse it as a planning work. We bring it to you guys. Here's a voucher for this door expense. It's an, oh, you see that it's an authorized legitimate expense. That money then comes out of the contingency account. That money's put into that, from leases and is paid out of that. It's not where you have to scrounge around to find $650 that wasn't in a budgeted item. And then initially budgeted item.
That makes more sense to me. Um, so are you going to go to the city of Newcastle and get their, their, their full approval without anybody, anybody having to say, no, I'm not okay with it, or yeah, I am okay with it? You have full authority to spend money out of that line item on our, on your own behalf?
We, we took, we had a meeting too at the city and county attorney after we talked to Paul. And you guys were, I was going to talk to see if there were problems with the statutes that the county or the city had setting this account up. I don't think they, there's a problem with it, was there?
There's no.
We heard anything from either attorney that there's something that this would jump up, say, oh, you can't do that.
I think as long as you had a letter of support from the, from the city of Newcastle giving you the authority to, that those monies aren't going to be separated anymore. Those monies are just to go into a county holding account, I guess. You have the right to use.
The way we briefly, we kind of discussed, this is before we even knew what legal, how we were going to go about doing it, but they, they said they, uh, at that point in time, they didn't have a problem with it. Basically, what they wanted was a report every month of what man, what...
The city, you mean?
The city.
Yeah, we, we addressed it to the city previously.
We're going to go to them at their next meeting and, uh, and we will get a letter if they, if they agree.
And that's what they're, they're, they didn't have a problem with it. They want to know how you guys felt about it. And then if there's any legal ramifications about doing it. And they were kind of one of the, thinking of, well, you want a checkbook and we don't want a checkbook. That, that's way, way more complicated than we want to get into. And Paul fucking him, when we said no checkbook, that made him a lot happier too. We don't want a checkbook.
He's kind of like prepaying himself, in a way.
When I talked to him, because he was in here and I, he brought, he actually brought it up.
Who's he?
Paul. Um, he was more a line item. And not a separate, like department. It was a line item. And so the, um, so that goes through a budget process. And, um, which I don't have a problem with, but you're going to have to wait a little while to figure out. I mean, we do have six months to figure that out. And then it's a voucher system that just goes away to every voucher that you have. It's just a line item.
Well, how he explained it to us, if I understand right, on the phone is, because he's, the example he used when we, after he understood what we're doing, when he told the revenue would come from like the hangar funds, the income the airport generates, he says, there are shops in the city and county levels around the state that set up a fund like this, that money goes in. And it sits there and when they have a, an unplanned for expense, say road repair or something like that, that, oh, we need this repair maintenance, we didn't budget this, but we need this money, this fund is there.
So, Mr. Chairman, I don't, I think we're on two different levels here because we have to have a budget line. If you're going to have a line item, it has a budget. And that's what we taught, I talked with Paul, that if it's a line item, it has a budget and goes through a budget process.
When I, when we talked to him, he said we would have our regular budget, we would submit every year, each entity, you and the city.
So, let me interrupt you. So if you get money in, then we have to have a budget adjustment that goes into that account. We have to tell all the people in this county what money's coming in, what's going out. So there's no, so I guess we have a miscommunication of that you just can dump this money into a certain account and then you can do whatever. It has to go through a voucher system, so we have to have a budget system.
Well, the money will be shown in it because it, but it just, the way Paul explained it, if I understood right, when the money comes in, he uses an accounting term, and he used like a number 100 on accounting.
No, it would not be a 100.
Well, he just, just a number, just assigned a number. And that goes in the ledger and that's an income for this month, from the hangar lease. And then when we have an expense from the contingency fund, that would be voucher, say 501 expense out of that. And that money comes out of the, from the 501 to the 100, the 100.
When Paul was here, he talked to me a little bit about, about it and explained it to me. It would be just like how we created a line item for the fairgrounds wall. We, you guys create a line item and, and it would, it would be a hundreds account. But, and then you would name it hangar account or whatever. Anytime you get a check or whatever, you bring it here, the board would have to do a budget adjustment for that amount of unanticipated funds for the amount that you guys received. That amount would go in the hangar account. And then that amount would continually go up. And then you would have to do a voucher for any time you spent out of it. But it would just be like the fairgrounds wall that the board has just recently created.
Right, that, yeah, but from the way you...
Well, my, and then that's, yeah, yeah. We just...
And that's not the one, the term of the sinking fund.
Yeah, a sinking fund, that's got to be earmarked for one specific item. So sinking fund has to be for a designated item. To do it like that, could we, what 12 months worth of income off the hangar going to be, say, $8,000? At budget time, we put $8,000 into that line item and then every time you get monthly payments, you bring them in as a, uh, collections. So basically, we would front you the $8,000 or whatever, whatever the year comes up to, and then you basically repay it back in on collections.
But the, the other way you could do it is the same with the fuel tank account.
Yeah.
So the fuel tank account becomes a, one of our reserve accounts. And so when we need to take that money out, we have a budget adjustment, we put it in that line and they spend the money on the fuel tank or whatever. That would be the same idea, that you just have to dump that in there. We keep a running total of it. When budget comes, you determine what it is and we put it in as a budget line and then off to the races.
We'd still have to do a budget adjustment every month when we brought money in.
Absolutely, you'd have to. I mean, it'd be this, well, it'd be part of the collections. It'd be just the same thing as, as the fuel line, fuel tank account. But, um, at least with the voucher system, we would, and it could be adjusted if, if you have something else, then we have a budget adjustment that takes that out of that account and puts it back into the budget. But we have to budget a line item for it.
The, yeah, I understand it. The only, the only thing with, with the, the hangar lease, we have that one leasable hangar that can generate more revenue than, we don't know what it can generate. It, it, it might be setting $5 a month. It might be $7,000 a year. We don't know, but it's a, it's an income, it's like a motel room, I'll say. You either rent it out or you don't rent it out. So that, that's why, if you say, we're going to put a fund in it, if we say, well, okay, we want $10,000 in there, but yet if that hangar gets rented 300 days a year, that's $15,000 now.
No, but what we're, what we're seeing, it's the same thing with our fuel tank. We have no idea what the fuel tank over. So those, that money just keeps getting deposited in there, but if something needs to happen. And fuel tank's a little different because it's not like a whole bunch of different things. You would know, and we're not even doing a budget yet. So we won't be doing a budget until March or April. You will have at least these six months to figure out what, what you'll have in there. If you open the account now, you'll have some money in there. By the time budget comes, we'll take that money and put it in the line item.
I guess right now, we're, we're just looking at being able to create this account line or whatever you want to call it.
Well, I think that's the best way that we can do it because it shows the public what's in there and then what we took out and what you spent.
Or, yeah, fuel tank would be airport contingency account.
Right, or maintenance fund or whatever.
Yeah, and then it's, Paul, he, he talked about that long, then what you want to call it. He didn't hear what you called it, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, that's a... Yeah, safety fund, that's an earmark for a special project or like a reserve.
They don't want anything that's just going to have only for one thing.
If you do a reserve account, it's got to be earmarked for whatever reserve it is.
So are we saying that right now the checks that's hanging on to, you can put them in an account so you don't have to hang on to them for six months? Is that what we're saying?
So is it more creative?
Yeah.
So if I hand these checks today, can we, can we...
You don't?
We can move to set up an account? Absolutely.
I mean, if you want to hold, or do whatever you want with the check, we were just going to, you know, say, okay, we handed them today, but the account's not set up for the next amount of days.
Well, we've never been able to turn in this much amount of money in a long time to the commissioners. That's what's, we're, close to $6,000.
So here's the, here's the interesting part about this. So you're going to open that, we'll open that line item for you. We'll make the, the book adjustment to have that amount in it. You want to spend it, come back here until the budget. And budget time, that's not a problem. We'll, when you, when budget comes, we'll put whatever is in that account, we can put in the budget line. But until we do a new budget, um, you're going to have to come out and we can, we can do that and put it in line.
Well, hopefully, we're not going to have any issue with that. And you said the hangar is not something that...
Right, so I think it's...
Yeah, it would be...
You just change yourself, that's okay.
What, what our goal is long-term existence is that, and this will be, but Paul expressed how he, he's seen it work in the past, is you start these funds with a small amount. And he used an example, say $10,000. In the first year, you only divvy a thousand out of it, but it accumulates. So down the road, you have, in three years, you have $30,000 in there. Now we have a, an expenditure where there's, say, a $3 million grant coming from the state or the federal government. And our match is 4%, two from the city, two from the county.
Well, it'll be two from the city, two from the county anywhere.
But what I'm saying is, when you've got this fund that now has $30,000 in it, we can go there and say, we don't need to ask for $15,000 from you guys because we have enough in this fund to cover that match.
It's just like the fuel tank account.
That's what the fuel tank, it is building up reserves, so when our tanks have to be repaired or replaced, that money's there.
There, we can come and ask.
That's looking down the road and see, this is to help ease everybody's burden in the future.
If you can get the city to say, okay.
We, we would just have to create the account. Once, I mean, Becky could do that today or whenever. If you enter the checks, the checks would go in it tomorrow. But you might want to get to the cities.
Yeah, we're on, we're slated on their next meeting this year is 17. And I said, we already talked to them and their response was, what's the county going to do?
I want to get to the cities.
Yeah, we're on, we're slated on their next meeting this year is 17. And I said, we already talked to them and their response was, what's the county going to do? What are they thinking, what are you guys thinking?
Well, they just were so, yeah, they were just, they didn't know how to do that. And then they said, well, leave it to the county to kind of decide them to handle the funds and invite the checks and we got it.
And I was like, all right. I, I would like the fuel tank reserve account to be a perfect way to...
But come up with the name so I can make the motion.
Airport contingency.
Airport Fund Fund?
Airport Reserve?
Yeah, Reserve.
No, you put the word reserve, you're going to have earmarked it for a project.
So are you wanting to do it with just the hangar funds and that's what we're going to do? So why can't we just do airport?
On the solid waste history, if you have, if you have reserves, you have to earmark it for reserve. Otherwise, you just have it as a cash on it and...
If we go for...
So why can't we just do, um...
What about airport fund?
Airport contingency.
Airport contingency.
For operating, operating.
And we're putting it right into their general account, right?
No, we're putting it up right, it would go right underneath like the fuel account. Remember how we have on our...
It's just the reserve account.
Right, that's the under a reserve account. But, um, then we would move it when they wanted the money, just like we do with the, with the fuel tank.
Mike, do you have any input on this? What, Paul, that covers anything?
Just the airport fund would probably be good enough.
Operations account?
The reason I, I like chairman of operations is because when the FAA, when we got money for the winter, the COVID money, that's what they said could be used for airport operations.
From airport operations?
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I moved that, uh, we have the clerk along with the treasurer, um, for my, uh, an account called Airport Operations Account to be structured in the same way as our fuel account.
Second.
Mr. Chair, I'll recuse myself from the vote.
Okay. Maybe an amendment, only funded through airport hangar.
Income?
All other income still comes to the county to be split. Yeah, what other income?
Yeah, what, yeah, clear that up.
Blow each green.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, just so I understand, so until budget time though, if you need to use some of that money, you're still going to have to come to us for permission? And then once the budget process goes through, then it would be handled different? Am I understanding, okay?
Even after, I understand, even after this is created, anytime we need that fund, we're still coming to you with an invoice of what we need the funds for.
Mr. Chairman? No. So what we're telling you is at budget time, we'll take that money and put it in your budget line.
But what I'm saying is the checking balance for us, we're still going, if we draw on that fund, we're going to bring you a voucher that says...
Oh, absolutely. Oh, you have to, it's a voucher system, yes.
Yeah, I will, I don't want any aspect that we touch that fund without your knowledge.
No, you'll even get one of these, like you do now. And at budget time, we will put that money in that budget and you'll see as it goes down or up or...
Yeah, I just, I want to make it very clear, I don't want, nobody in our area touches that funds without you being, being aware.
So like from now until budget time, you need to spend some of that money, you'll have to come to us. Right. But after the budget cycle goes around, then it's, you do the voucher and it's like you do the other ones.
And when you're out, you're out.
Yeah. Becky, that sheet that she was just showing, do you send a copy back to the city as far as they're forced?
This is what we pay and then Suzie sends them half of what we've spent and then gives them half of what we've brought in. So Suzie does the whole.
Okay, well, I just looked on it because I, they, that was one of the things they requested that, uh, that we have a report. I don't want money to...
So you can send them what we give you, if you want.
Well, yeah.
Because you get a copy of this each year.
Right, yeah. And, yeah, as long as it's on there or something.
Some of the questions they asked us was they, they were unclear of exactly how their half of our funds were coming from them to us, to you.
So how it works is the county pays everything for the airport upfront. And then Suzie sends them a bill for half of what we've spent. And then Suzie gives them a check for everything that we've brought in.
Yeah, I understand that. But when you try to explain that to eight council members, six of them don't understand it, they still don't understand what we're done. It's almost like you guys need to get together with them, just join, join groups together
Well, what I was going to say is, we would like to have a letter from the city, knowing that they understand that all funds will go into that, that account and that there will be no dividing of anything anymore. That all expenses other than those other expenses of those other line items, but any expenses of that account will not be built forever.
Yeah, and that was...
So we need a letter for that.
That was part of the problem, explaining when we said, well, the funds we generated, the first thing, we don't get any money from you guys.
But yeah, they just, there were some city council members that weren't sure. I mean, states and, obviously, the mayor and everything, but it says, some of the council members weren't quite up to speed on how it was being, they were...
It happens, happens. It, it happens. You can't learn everything.
Then, big picture, 10 years from now, you don't need that account. Basically, if that account were to close, half would have to be taken in and be then...
Whatever, yeah.
Yeah.
Another discussion.
Oh, we're still discussing.
Yeah. Where are you at?
Obviously, on something else.
So, you're okay with the motion maker in a second to the state's airport hangar rental?
Right. Yeah, income.
There you go.
Like I was saying, just the income, the hangar's income goes into that account.
Okay, so we got that.
Yeah.
We're not changing the name.
No.
How do you have the name again, please?
Airport Operations Account.
Right.
Anything else? All those in favor of the motion on table, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed. Robert's a very good times account.
I will guarantee you, you will never see a voucher with that on it. Don't even get him, Rob. Maybe after I'm meeting with the council, he won't even see me on this floor anymore. We're trying to keep you, but... My work here is done.
Ching!
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys. Thanks for your patience.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, we do. Okay, and let her know not to do anything, that's all I have to do.
She will do.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so you guys had asked me to get you the list of everybody who's still non-compliant. And so I messaged, um, Rachel in the Department of Audit and she said that everyone is still non-compliant. She said, um, that it's all five, I think there's five on there. Yeah, five on the list. I said, "Good morning, Rachel. I just wanted to touch base with you regarding the notification list. Have any of the districts come into compliance? Board is wanting to send a letter to them, but only the ones still not compliant. Thank you." She said, "Unfortunately, all five entities are still non-compliant." And then she just sent me the report again.
Could somebody read the list?
Sure. It is Cambry Improvement and Service District, Combined Communications Dispatch, Joint Power Board, Weston Water District, Weston County Health Services, and Weston County Police District. And then at West, um, most of them, actually, all of them are non-compliant.
Solid Waste should be, like, we was working with Paul, getting that done. So that one should be coming through. That's just a report, you think?
We're sending you a letter anyway.
What?
We're sending you a letter anyway.
Go ahead. Locks 158.
So is that just what we want to do, is just send a letter to all these folks and or email or whatever? The read receipt?
If they don't get them, then the next letter we'll get from the Department of Audit is for the county attorney to start the process of them to resolve.
This is all the district.
And then that's a list because then they have to start formation, they have to have their election and all that stuff. We went through that one, so we're not completely through it, but...
Move to, um, that's why I said, Chairman, save me a chair on a letter to those non-compliant... Move to, um, that's why it's the chairman's signature on a letter to those non-compliant.
Second.
Probably second, for the chairman's signature on a letter to all non-compliant districts in the county. Discussion.
Mr. Chair, has there been any reasoning? These districts not being compliant, after being aware?
You want me to grab something for you?
You don't mind, yeah.
I, and I think reasoning is, I just don't know if folks.
Yeah. You get a letter, um, send it to Dr. Ian.
And you can get on the Department of Audit website and see if they're now compliant.
Hey, Ma'am.
I just checked, there was some kind of discrepancy on ours, so we're still working on it, but it's kind of, that effort continues, kind of a pain in the butt.
It wasn't fun, I remember us all sitting in here trying to plot that form.
Probably not, it's not getting done.
And then there would be a blip, and then you had to start all over again, you guys would.
We're gonna have.
Use some clinical language.
See, if you don't work on it, they're not ignoring it, it's just getting all ironed out and done right.
Oh, you, sorry, you just went over.
That's all I'm, I'm, I'm voting, no, go send the letter.
Okay, I will.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. We have a discussion? Um, all those in favor of the motion on the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed. I'm not, it matters.
It doesn't matter. Deep down, no.
Deep down.
Is Jason still out there?
I don't know.
Well, he had an idea for the credit card thing, remember he said?
Who's Dan talking to?
No Dan?
Dan.
Is, is Jason out there?
Maybe Dan, you wanna ask Dan?
Dan is. Yes, Dan is.
Dan, did you bring the, Jason had an idea for the credit card policy? Did you, do you remember what it was, or did you have it, or?
No, he has a, um, how to remedy that.
Yeah, that's why we invited him to come out.
Oh, I didn't, he's the only one.
There's, there's only one in jail right now.
You don't run with his idea, then? Don't know. He did not.
You may send him up here.
Yeah, if you can. Oh, Jesus.
That was wild, don't worry.
And our attorney saw it, oh, man.
Oh, no, maybe.
Workplace harassment right there.
No, that's just, that's, that's love.
Oh, Lord. Do I need to drag the other one in here?
What I do, the Title 25, well.
To witness?
Marty, do you need anything? Just do that Title 25 quick, over, wait a minute.
Yes.
So, I, I reached out to Don, who's currently helping us with that, because I didn't know, like, I said, I said, "Don, what do you use?" And, and after reading the emails with, um, our attorney, the, there's really no literature out there for anything, like, do you need, you don't need a cage necessarily, you don't really, it sounds like you can throw somebody in the backseat of the car and drive them to Cheyenne, however, at what risk do you put yourself at, throwing somebody in the backseat of a random car? I don't know if there is any liability to, probably, so, so I asked Don, I said, "What do you do?" And he goes, "Well, my van's got a place below the seat where they can handcuff, or handcuff them up, and then handcuff their legs down at the bottom of the seat." I said, "So you don't have a cage?" He said, "No," and, um, he also doesn't have the ability to have a nurse go along, if they need any sedation or any medical help, which also is under requirement, that I see anywhere. I mean, if this guy has a pickup with a cage, he's probably just as, I mean, I mean, as qualified as Don, I can assume. He's got police background, right, and when I posed it to Don, I said, "Man, if it's not because of, nobody necessarily tried to replace you, but it might be an option for another alternative in the event that," because he said, "It's always 11 o'clock at night, and it's never when it's convenient." So, the other thing, um, Nick asked me to go to one of their city meetings, and he was contemplating visiting with the, their EMTs, to see if they would be interested in maybe occasionally hauling somebody, which I would assume they'd be qualified just as anybody, you know, maybe more. But I'm sure they can be handcuffed on a gurney if need be, or whatever. But I just wanna kind of update you guys, so I'm planning on going on the tent and not really representing the board, but just giving them some input on the fact that we've had it brought up, that maybe there's other alternatives, and if they're interested, maybe give you three things in that to potentially haul. That maybe there's other alternatives, and if they're interested, maybe give you three things in that to potentially haul. I don't think we have a contract. Go ahead.
Well, see, that was one thing I would like. Contract, I need that back. To have a contract, but I also would like if, if we'd be able, that our attorney could find where our liability is, if something should happen. I would, I would like that written out.
Yeah, the way the statute reads, that is cleared, that first 72 hours, it's basically like you have cut, it's, that person's in your custody.
Regardless of who it is, whoever we, so I mean, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. So in the, what I would like to see in a contract, that we either absolve ourselves, or if the statute says that, but here's what we require from you. So I would still like to, to, um, go look at that, you know, explore that.
So in that 72 hours, can they be put into custody in a general, in a general jail?
Not generally, unless there's specific reason, statute.
Like if it's a threat to themselves, right, I mean, I'm threatening to kill myself.
It's very limited, it's.
So generally, what we do is if, if we don't know you, we don't know your demeanor, things like that, you stay in our holding cell till you see the court. Once you're done with the court, then we put you.
That's just strictly a fact, that's not a title.
Oh.
Sounded like I knew what I was saying.
I remember the statute, there's very specific things that you can.
Where they can be held.
But it's very limited on where, when it can be held in a jail cell, and it's not frowned upon quite.
Yeah.
It, for our, for our responsibility of this, shouldn't we have some kind of job description or requirements of these people as far as their insurance and liability and.
At least insurance. Insurance minimum, I like, I don't know if you forwarded that email that we sent, but.
The one from the state, or whoever you were talking to?
Yeah, we were talking with WBI.
Yeah.
They, they talked about how the guy from Lander did it, and that seems like very good practice. Basically, as a cage, has, um, either off-duty or retired, one of the two, law enforcement help him. You can, if I'm saying this wrong, because you were in the conversation, and then he keeps in contact with law enforcement as it goes down the road.
So if they have an issue or something, they contact law enforcement, they go, dissolve their, um, wherever they're going through on their travel to whichever facility they're going to, so, um, yeah, it's, it's off-duty or retired, but they're still certified law enforcement officers that he hires, so, to do that.
So the guy that, um, I don't know, I guess, it's unbelievable to me that they dropped this on the county's responsibility, and now you put you, put us in liability for all these other things, potentially, for dealing with this individual, so, I don't know.
So tell me, when they're certified, what advantage would that do? Just a way to handle a prisoner, or?
They have police officer certification, so they have, um, they fall within that through being able to transport somebody through, through the state, they have, have the authority to follow them by statute.
And I think it's two-fold, it's training, and they have the experience, and they also have some skin in the game as far as certification.
Okay, okay. It, it just kind of looks like you're cozying up to them, and that's, that's kind of weird to me.
Not only you.
So.
Tell us about it, Dan.
So when you say it's frowned upon, put them in a, a holding cell for, I mean, at some juncture, I don't really care if it's frowned upon, if it's gonna cost $20,000 to lifeline them.
But it's a medical, because they're, they're, they're not criminal, it's a medical portion of it, so it's a, it's a mental health thing, and they're not, the jail is not set up to handle that, and deal with that portion of it, to give them the medical and the, that, we're, we're criminal. Title 25 is a, is not a criminal charge or holding.
The statute's pretty specific on when you can have them in jail.
She can try to jump off a bridge, and that's not a.
Not against law.
Oh, sorry. Staring through my hand, sorry. Why did you ask that?
Putting, go ahead.
Sorry. So we had this discussion when they were remodeling the hospital, why they didn't put in, and I'm just gonna use this weird term, but the drug tank, and is it not possible to use a hospital room? I mean, that's a medical facility, but you still would have to have an officer, I suppose. Obviously, you'd have to have an officer.
That, that falls upon the hospital at that portion. Some hospitals have, have a room, a secured room, that they have their own security, that when there's a, there's a mental individual that's health, their security, they put them in there, if they have problems, then, that they can't handle, then a lot of times, law enforcement's called, but that is something that is the hospital, and those hospitals, portion of it, because otherwise, if you're saying that, like, if they have a room set up, and then you have a, have a officer sitting on that, now, now you guys are gonna be responsible for paying overtime and another individual for us to have somebody sitting there.
Probably cheaper than 20 grand.
And we'd still be on, then we would be on the hook for the hospital room.
Isn't it the county hos, isn't it the county hospital? I mean, we, we maybe should have some say in that, but I, I find it interesting, and now we should think more about the legislative side of this, that what you said kind of was a light bulb, that this isn't criminal, this is medical, so now the state is put back on the county about people's medical expenses. And that's kind of interesting to look at it that way. Like, wow.
Yeah, this has been a mess for.
Years.
Dec, decade.
It's been a mess for years, ever since they switched it and put it back on.
Okay, so, um, when I was in Teton County, their hospital, St. John's, they had a, a section that was just for Title 25s in the hospital. It was a secured room, locked in, they had their own security, and they contracted that out through whatever the security company was, the only time law enforcement ever was there if somebody was in custody and transported over, but which rarely ever happened, but if somebody was, uh, there on that, and they caused property damage to the hospital, then officers were called, and then they were moved to a different portion of it, so it was strictly, strictly on the hospital on that portion, because there's no, like I said, no criminality in them being there, uh, and for us to be there, so.
So there's property damage, and maybe you.
If they destroy something and they want charged, yep, there can be. Then they're gonna call for law enforcement, because then there's, they can't handle either, so.
We're in a, I've heard counties handle them theirs. They probably have far fewer than we do, but they have them, I'm sure.
Count, remember the office in Iber County, but these are the people took in here to find the body in the water, so, there's that.
Makes, makes more sense to me if something like that could be worked out, maybe even between two or three counties. I'd rather give $6,000, $8,000 a pop to my local hospital than use it to transport someone somewhere else, and still pay that, we're still paying the bill. Matter of fact.
Still be transported.
After 72 hours, though, are they still, are we still required if we hold them for 72 hours?
No, county's responsibility is just that first 72 hours, accepting holidays and weekends.
So if we have them for 72 hours, then it's the state's responsibility, right?
Yeah, because you have that, you have to have that initial hearing within that time, and then you basically know where it's going after that first 72 hours anyway, so.
And at some point, we're, could be right, I mean, that's $3,000 or $4,000 pumped into the hospital instead of transferring, if they can hold them for that 72 hours.
Let, let me ask a simple question here, which is weird for me. Um, who initiates the Title 25?
The doctor, the doctor, the law enforcement, or medical provider.
So give me a scenario of how that would, I mean, you get a call that somebody's gonna jump off the bridge, you go find out?
You go, that individual, if they're actively trying to plan, actively working on it, or have a plan on what they're gonna do, they're a danger to themselves, so then it would, it would start that Title 25 process where they would need to go to the hospital, follow a pick work, they get evaluated by the doctor, the medical doctor would fill out the other portions of it and start it.
So, Mr. Chairman, so would, would the law enforcement take them?
Huh? At that point, not out on the field, yeah. If, if I got called to somebody who's trying to jump off of the bridge.
Right.
I would take that person, and they're not free to leave at that portion of it, because they're a danger to themselves.
But it's not against law.
We would take them, we would take them to, to the hospital to get evaluated.
Okay, thank you.
You're no longer free to leave the scene, you are.
Well, we are now, our public caretaker, basically, to get them the.
I'm not trying to make light of it, no, I was.
I've, it's, yeah, so that they can get the, the mental help that they need, so.
Anyhow, that's what I learned from Don, and that email, I'll forward it on to you guys, to, um, Dan and Michael, had with whoever it was.
Cool, okay.
Really?
Disappearing one flies. What's going on? A sticker.
Um, Jason, you had an idea of the credit card policy?
You had an idea? What was it?
I had, mine is just, I mean, there ain't nothing special about it, it was just, what we did was, um, in the vehicle, we just put out an envelope. So typically, what happens, it's usually on an officer's day off, so they throw it in their pocket, they throw it in their wallet, they get back, they want it just to be done, so they go home. I come back in two days, three days, well, now I've lost it. So what we did was, in the vehicle, we have a folder to put the, the receipts in there, and then when they come into the office, we'll, we'll actually photocopy, so I have a hard copy of the receipts, because sometimes. Because sometimes what happens too is, they get put in Tanya's box or on her desk, and then with all the paperwork she gets thrown on her desk, sometimes it just gets lost in the shuttle. So I will make a photocopy of the receipts, have them in my office, so I'm hoping that alleviates the missing receipts. So nothing high-tech.
Who doesn't have a cellphone in their pocket today? Why can't you just take a photocopy of the receipt the moment you get the receipt handed to you? Why wouldn't that work as proof of?
If you guys are good with that, we can absolutely do that.
I mean, I think there's...
Yeah, would you take your mail for your forgotten receipt?
If you took the time, I don't think there's anything that says it has to be an original. I think it has to be a copy of the itemized, you know, you need to send a copy of the itemized receipt. So I think it's not an issue that if you were, and I've seen them, I've seen them, we've come through here that we've taken photocopy, some copy? Photocopies as proof of. So if you did a phone one and then you sent it to the printer and say, cool. So I don't know if that's not a bad practice to have anyway, in case something should happen. I don't think that's a bad practice.
No, if you guys are okay with that, I could, we could definitely add that into the process.
Just say somebody took a photo of it. Now, you're signing a perjury letter, as you know, so you're not going to pick up every one that comes along.
I wouldn't put your personal phone in any, using it for government with it.
Unless for some reason you took me the code over the receipt, then my phone now becomes...
They're going to print it off anyway.
Right, and if that came to that, and I need your... If it was to come to that, he would be the one that has to go through, and he's not going to pick anything other than what is...
Permanent.
Permanent to that case, and that would be that, that photo of that, I mean, that's, or third party, it doesn't necessarily have to be the county attorney, but I think it's just third party.
The only issue is like, some people might not want some personal stuff revealed that's on there.
Old Swiper. No, we have a printable cellphone here that we can use. So we can, if like I said, if we're okay with that process, then I'll just make sure that if you take that, take the transport, take the transport phone and use that as your receipt, so.
If you can, get the real one, if something happens.
Well, I think with that, along with everything else, I think we should not have an issue.
I got a question on receipt stuff. So this has happened, you're, we're out somewhere or transport something, you have to stop at a gas station at 1:00, 2:00 in the morning, fill up. That gas station is closed and you can't get a receipt because it won't print out. What are we supposed to do on that portion?
Take pictures. Take pictures of the pump.
Take a picture somehow. We have to have a receipt. That's state law.
Okay. Well, you don't have a printed out receipt. So you're going to say that the photograph of the...
I don't know.
At least it would match the credit card.
It's supposed to, but it won't.
Is there out of paper, you can't get a receipt sometimes?
Well, that's my question, if you can't get a receipt, what are we looking for?
Well, if it matches, if the number is on that photograph, and you look at the credit card bill, it matches 6872 on X date, it's pretty obvious to me.
It's timestamped.
Yep.
We have to have something.
I understand, I was just wondering whether, what is the...
I would rather see a photo of that pump on that date with that price versus on such and such date I filled up here, you know?
You're in it for the fun?
Yeah, I love folklore and storytelling and for me, Halloween is, we celebrate it, we do the costumes, and I love to watch horror movies and eat garbage, and I don't, you know, think my kids candy. But you know, I've heard it said that, you know, sometimes horror movies, ghosts, monsters are really just, you know, what metaphors for the other things we're really afraid of, but can't address directly. Maybe it's healthy to get this out of our system. As a kid, if I heard a bump in the night, I'd be terrified. As an adult, if I hear a bump in the night, I'm terrified, it's the furnace and I have to pay for it. You know, maybe it was fun sometimes to be afraid of things that in most cases couldn't really hurt you, instead of worrying about debt or child abduction or, you know, cancer or something that really is a threat. It's fun to be afraid of things that can't really hurt you.
I would rather see a photo of that pump on that date with that price versus on such and such date I filled up here, you know?
That's just my personal thing, I'd rather see that than just something scribbled out on the back of an...
And an order, what to?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, again, we can add that into our process, absolutely.
Okay, well, that's, Mr. Chairman. So I'd like to put this back on there. I don't know if it was ever off, on there, but put it on there, but because of state law, we have to have in mind if we put what we just said, a photograph, photograph copy of it, timestamps, whatever. I don't even care about, the timestamp would only matter if what the scenario you just said. If you went and here's all my receipts, and I'm going to take a picture of them because before I lose them, I don't think we have to worry about time. You know, they're on the receipt. You know, if you're doing a backup, just in case the wind blew and took that whole envelope that you talked about, because every now and then there'll be bills in this thing. I don't see that, but I would like to put it back in here, that if you don't, you're responsible for it. Because we're not going to have a late payment on our credit card. We bought you the meal, we bought you, therefore, bring us a receipt.
But I think we should have something in there defining the, you know, that process of like you said, photo or, so I think, you guys may already have that in there.
Yeah, I think it should have been in there, handwritten ones do not suffice.
Photocopy or the original, that's going to be pretty easy to put in there.
Preferred original, but we were photocopied.
If you can say by cellphone, whatever.
But we have to have it printed out. I mean, there's going to be a photocopy, it's going to be, so an original or a photocopy of the itemized receipt.
Picture, picture or photocopy, original with picture or photocopy.
You could put photocopy of the photo.
Yeah.
Doesn't have to be color.
Eagles on that birdage.
A printed photograph, photocopy, printed photograph or original.
Look at the words snipped out there.
He's the bird of knowledge.
That's why he was snuck one out to get it.
I deal with a lot of... What about?
I can't even imagine.
Great area.
Only doing this, I didn't leave it there. Then what was the other one that we had?
Per diem.
Per diem, can we just mark that? I think I understand what the idea was.
But we don't really, remember when we were talking about when you went to, was it Reno or Windover or somewhere to, and the cost was really high, and we talked about per diem? But we don't really use per diem, so it's confusing to have it in there. We either need to go to a per diem policy, a per diem policy. Otherwise, you have this weird gradient that we're not using. I would say take it out of there.
I would too, I would. I think if you were to go to another one of those kind of events, that you would come in and say, listen, it's probably going to be easier if we could just have a per diem. Could we voucher $62.50 a day? Or have something to that effect, and then it's not a matter of, then you, it's a per diem, it falls under a different...
I've done it before, and $75 a day, every year meal.
Well, and the state has the same thing, that you're going to be paid a per diem, it goes on your paycheck, the whole thing. I don't know how we do that with payroll, but that's how it's done.
Do you want a $75 steak as your only meal? Have it.
Right, you have nothing else.
Or you pay for it yourself.
So I think if, I would take it out, but if there was a conversation to come in, we could determine what a per diem was, if there was going to be something interesting like that happen again.
But it should almost be its own separate policy.
Right, I don't have a problem with that. But I always think it's only case by case basis. I'd mark six out of...
Well, I think the issue would be transports, because sometimes we get a call, we need to go to Idaho and take somebody there. So it's not like, you said, the Reno thing where, hey, in three weeks, a month, we've got a train in there, but here, now I got to go. Part of that was brought up with some meals in Jackson, you know, on a transport, that's definitely a lot different than Lusk when you're getting a meal, you know?
Over the hill to beer boys. Wait an hour.
So, like I said, that would be the only thing as far as us is transports.
But, Mr. Chairman, I don't think we'd have a problem if you went and hedged your meal. You know, are we going to sit here and maybe say, you're not getting lobster and steak for that meal? You know, see what I'm saying? I don't think that's an issue.
So are you required to pay for it first and then reimburse it? Because a lot of times that per diem, that's what like the state used to do.
Mr. Chairman.
Because that makes it really hard for people.
No. Mr. Chairman, the per diem that I always was told, well, my daughter works for the state, she got one. That was part of her pay.
Okay.
So she got a per diem. She got meals, whatever it cost for her to go to that convention. She didn't have to reimburse any, she was paid a per diem.
So lots of times, when I worked for the state, we had to like pay our own, pay for our own meals and then get reimbursed.
Kind of with your paycheck?
Yeah. It would be in our paycheck, but we had to pay for everything on our own upfront. And so like now, I mean, like, I'm not going to conference because I'm not going to pay for all that upfront, and I may not have to, like in these guys, by the way, if they have to get up and leave, they may not be able to cover that. So that's what I'm thinking, when you say per diem, is covering upfront, being reimbursed. And your per diem is that, you know, when you were allowed to spend $65 a day, the state was breakfast was free or whatever, and then you had, you know, lunch and supper, you were able to spend a certain amount. So that's what I'm thinking when you say per diem.
That's fair.
We've paid, I don't have any past work experience, I've paid guys prior to knowing that they're going to be on, you're going to be on for a week, here's a per diem check and cash.
But we don't have that luxury to do.
And I don't necessarily think, now that I think about it, that this was to pay per diem. This was to go to this link and to see, like, when they traveled to this town, that it was going to be a higher rate, so not to be shocked when they went there to eat, that their bill was going to be more expensive.
They did it by region.
Because this is what the going per diem rate was there. I don't think they were wanting us to even consider paying per diem.
But the word's daily meal amounts.
That's right, because that, it was expensive to eat there.
Okay, so I, I'm not sure that this board is necessarily...
Mr. Chairman, it's six.
Yeah, the trust is that you're not going to go get the lobster and...
So that's your one and only meal?
No.
Good free cost of life.
This baby is, well, then we can just eat them.
It's just confusing.
It's confusing, I think just take it out, I think it's confusing.
The lobster was free, the bed cost a lot.
Why you put the Joe's crab, yeah, it's true.
On his statement. It was pretty big cost.
Part of my uniform.
I mean, it's pretty rare that I've ever seen anything come through here.
That's weird.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen a couple of...
I have too, then I...
Pretty fancy dining, but, I mean, is that also something that should be considered, you know? I mean, there's a threshold that around county, you know, it's...
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think part of the issue at one time was, if you wiped out your, that account expense line for conventions, which we don't have a lot of those lines anymore, but at one time, if you wiped that out, it's gone. You want to quip it on four dinners that cost $100 a piece, well, it's gone. We don't quite play it like that anymore, but... Okay, so we need the part in there that if you don't bring us one, you're out of pocket.
So I'll take that on four.
Check written to the visa.
And then we did, did you still want the gratuity or did it be zero?
I want the gratuity, let's have that conversation, we've had it before. I'm not big on the gratuity.
Me neither.
You got a meal. Do you think the service is good? Not every taxpayer in this place knows what kind of shit, so I think you can come up with a gratuity. It was zero at one time, we went back and put a 15 in, but we are getting that abused. Fifteen is tough to come up with, I mean, a lot of times your receipt, let's say 18, 20 and 25 or something, and everybody's going, well, it's 15. We've had a couple come across here, over 200 percent. So I'd like, let's, we tie it to this board, but if we can have it written down, then we'll pass the policy.
I'm not opposed to zero, I mean, if it's, if you appreciate a given meal, then drop up 10 or 15 percent or whatever, you know?
Something to think about, let's say the board went to a conference after a certain amount of people, some of these places throw gratuity in there automatically, so keep that in mind when you say no zero.
That's true. There is a point to that, when you go to a convention type, they do do that to you. And if you go have meals with your legislator, sometimes it's parties of eight or more, but it's in the chart. You know, you don't need...
The way you have it is, there's zero, zero gratuity, but your receipt's going to show gratuity on there, so.
Then you might have to put the exception of the party, party limit. Because there are some party limits.
No gratuity above the charge?
So, yeah, in other words, go anonymously, you could tell the waitress, this card is paying for this, start pointing it up to 8 percent.
Or tell them it's a government card and they can't do that.
I think you very easily. Okay. Let's talk to this board. I appreciate your point. So you're right, in 12, it does kind of say, employees shall reimburse the tenant for such disapproved, but not disapproved. So not only should it say disapproved... So not only should it say disapproved, but you need to put it back up there where it says, um, no receipt. Because we might have approved it if you had a receipt. So, Mr. Chairman, I have no problem with us revising this and giving it six months. And, and then we'll look at it again. I honestly don't care for you. We'll go back to the old question.
Backtrack when I was here earlier. I forgot to mention, I did find a telemit.
Good to know.
At seventy-five dollars instead of two hundred and fifteen when you walk in the door. Now, obviously some things can't be through telehealth, but I did find one, so I did, I forgot to add that in.
Hold on.
In my other meeting, so.
That's good news, thank you for telling us, because I think that's great news.
Yeah, so, well, thank you for giving me the latency to do that.
Thanks for doing that.
Thank you guys.
You gotta go somewhere like you mentioned, Dan, you know, three, four days prior typically or whatever, a week. I mean, I'm still not opposed to go on, no credit cards, but somebody, somebody has a credit card and just books rooms, so that that's not on the employees. I mean, if you can't afford a couple days' meals, something's not right in your life, I would mean.
There's what, the only thing I can see that would go wrong with using your personal credit card is timing. Um, if you charged a room and your meals and your gas and everything and you did a voucher, but you had to wait for us to approve it for a month and your bill is now due and now you're gonna have a late charge if you don't, you know, or, or if you're someone who pays off your bill every month and you don't ever get any fees. I can see where that could screw up somebody's personal credit card, no fault to them.
But what he's saying, is that if you know that it's happening, you come use the credit card.
Have a county credit card to, to book it, three nights worth of rooms or whatever.
And that's how...
A county credit card.
Yeah.
Used to do it, in LA.
That's for the sixteen.
But you have to have the card with you. You can't have one card. And that's why we ran into problems because we had one credit card and there was a limit and we all went somewhere and they shut all of our cards off because it was over the limit and none of us could use it.
I can see that.
So we all have to have our own.
So if there's a, maybe CCA or Waco or something, and everybody needs... Then you gotta, you gotta, gotta monitor a limit on your card.
You're gonna address that in a second.
So each deputy is issued a credit card, sheriff's office, and then it has their name on it. And there was a limit on that portion of it, and then there's one for, for the travel, like gas and everything else. So everyone has, but it's a, there's a, because we've had those issues too where somebody else got fraud of their card and it shut down the whole sheriff's office's cars and and people have been at trainings and all of a sudden, you can't cover, you can't put a thousand dollars worth of rooms for a week on your card because it got shut down and some people...